Good evening and welcome to the KMVT debate for council candidates in Los Altos. My name is Sam Harding and I'm the moderator this evening. And we're going to have a very warm and cordial discussion amongst our candidates with several prepared questions. So the first will be, the candidates will introduce themselves and tell us why they want to be on the Los Altos City Council. So who would like to begin?
I'd be happy to begin. My name is Jarrett Fishpaugh and I've been a resident here in Los Altos for the last 27 years. I've served on the city council for the last four years. Before that, I received my master's in applied economics and finance from UC Santa Cruz. I also attended Los Altos schools, including Santa Rita, Egan Junior High School, and Los Altos High School. As an alumni of these schools, I understand the importance that they have here in our community. I'm running for city council because I believe that there are projects like the community center that need leadership, and I hope to bring that. I also believe that there are programs in our city like the neighborhood traffic management plan that need to be revamped, and I hope that during the next term, I have the ability to drive that change within our city. I appreciate you considering me for a candidate for Los Altos City Council, and I'm delighted to be here tonight with KMVT's wonderful staff.
Who would like to be next?
I'll speak next. My name is Jean Mordot. I've been living in this area, in this community, for 14 years. The last year and a half in Los Altos, before that in the hills. And I love Los Altos. I love the center of Los Altos, the downtown. And one of the reasons, the main reason I want to run is that I want to protect it from any further damage and keep the charm and the look of the village feel that we have. My background has been a business executive and financed mostly for large corporations. And I've retired to Los Altos Hills and I have been very active in the Los Altos community for the last 14 years with my wife Barbara. And she's been a, she was a kindergarten teacher and elementary school teacher for 27 years. So my priorities are to, as I said, protect the look and feel of the village as we develop. I think we need some development, but we need some limits to the development, some better setbacks in their narrow streets to preserve the feel of the city. And I do want to develop the civic center for our seniors and children. And I also would like to start with a specific plan for downtown before we do anything else. So that's it, and I'd be honored to get your vote on November 4. Thank you.
Who's next?
I can go next.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Karen Burner, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight. Thank you. I'm, my background for the last 14 years has been fortunate to be a stay-at-home mom. It's given me the opportunity to work a lot as a volunteer in the community and in the schools. I've worked at school site council, I've served as PTA president, I've run a Girl Scout troop, and many other things that involved parents do. Currently, I'm the co-chair at the Los Altos High School of the STEM program. Working with these organizations has given me an opportunity to have some insight into our wonderful community. And being in Silicon Valley, we have quite a unique opportunity to leverage the Mecca of worldwide talent that we have here and maybe help to solve some of our issues. Looking at some of the issues would be parking solutions, the civic center, the school site, rapid growth, putting together a master plan for the city, and we need affordable solutions. So these are some of the issues that I see today. I'd like us to be able to think outside the box and consider all options. So I love Los Altos and I thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Next?
I'm happy to go. So I'm Mary Prochnow. I've lived in Los Altos since 1981 and I've worked here since 1972 as a Realtor. I too love Los Altos. I've served as president of the Board of Realtors and president of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been president of Los Altos Rotary, and I've served as co-chair of the original class, which was the campaign to keep Los Altos schools strong, the first time that we presented to the community the need for a bond measure successfully. I've served as co-chair of the Los Altos Rotary AIDS Project, of which I am extremely proud. A great team of people put together a project that went worldwide and improved the compassion for people suffering from that disease. I've served as chair of the Community Foundation and was on the board of the Community Foundation for 20 years. Each one of these positions has taught me to work with and understand different segments of the population. I want to use these experiences to make our town a little bit better. The Community Foundation was based on the ideas of John Gardner, who talked about building community. I'd like to spend the next four years improving our building of that community. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Andrew?
Hi, I'm Alex Sklue. I was born and raised in the San Francisco Bay Area. I attended UC Berkeley where I took a BS and MS in mechanical engineering. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of California, still active with the Berkeley Alumni Association, and sit on the awards committee for Cal. I spent a decade in high tech, then I went back to school and completed an MS and a PhD in material science at Stanford University. About that time, I moved to Los Altos. I've been living in Los Altos for the last 17 years, both north and mid-Los Altos, live in Loyola Corners now. I started an engineering firm at about that time also. I value education and hard work. I run an engineering company in Mountain View. I have empathy for building owners and business owners, but I don't have a conflict of interest. I don't have operations in Los Altos. As an engineer, I understand many codes and standards and what needs to be done to support infrastructure. I testify frequently as an expert in my field, testified in federal district court approximately half a dozen times, the International Trade Commission in Washington DC, international arbitrations, the High Court of Taiwan, and do work for other agencies. I think one of my special skills is to take complex information that I've worked on for extended periods and boil it down to useful information that other people can then make decisions with. I think of what Los Altos City Council needs to do as falling into two buckets. There's the core services that the city must offer: police, fire, maintenance, and sewage. And then there are the nicer things that the council needs to strive to do for the city: completing the recreation center, walking paths, swimming pools, making sure that the downtown experience is productive and pleasant. There's a balance between what we would like and what we can pay for, and that's part of the work that Los Altos Council needs to embark on. Council needs to offer leadership and clarity to the community. We need to transmit information. Of course, we need to be transparent, but we need to make sure the community knows what is going on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our first question will be about First Street, or as some are calling it, the canyon on First. So knowing what we know now and what you know, how would you have voted on those projects that are now on First Street? Who would like to go first? Sean?
I would have certainly voted no for the project the way they were completed. I think the street is too narrow for the height of the building. I have no problem with the height by itself, but we should have had wider setbacks and step back of the upper floors. And the Morris Building at the corner of Main and First Street should have been pushed back towards Foothill Expressway rather than toward First Street. So in general, you know, if you have wider setbacks and step back of the upper floors, then you have more daylighting and you can live with the height if that's what we accept in the town.
Great. Someone else? Comments?
I'm happy to provide some comments. As a member of the city council, I did have the opportunity to vote on many of the projects along First Street. While I haven't had the opportunity to be on the council as far back as when Randy Lamb's project at 100 First Street was approved, which is a four-story structure on First Street, I believe that the city council had a very delicate balance that we were trying to achieve with the construction that occurred there. The lot sizes for all the properties in between Foothill Expressway and First Street, it's important to note that these are not very deep lots. There used to be a railroad on Foothill Expressway, and First Street was the appropriate distance away from the railroad so that you could have a train station in between the railroad line and First Street. Because of this, we're left with very narrow lots along that stretch of the road. The idea of setbacks, the city supports. In fact, the city council supports setbacks. Along Edith, we have many three-story residential structures that have significant setbacks to provide the right daylight plain. Along First Street, I think that we have seen the construction showing some signs of creating too narrow of a street. But my gut feeling is that as these projects are completed, let's remember that we still have fencing up around some of our projects in the downtown, and that certainly impacts the pedestrian experience on those streets. But as the projects are completed and as the landscaping grows in, I think that we'll find that these are a wonderful investment in our community, and I think that they'll provide new services and new restaurants for our residents to enjoy, as well as housing that I know many residents in town strive to live within walking distance of our lovely downtown.
Great. Someone? Comments?
I can go. You know, when I walk down First Street, the area along Main does seem a bit overbearing, and I agree, it would be good if we could have had more setbacks. As I go down towards Safeway, the main complaint I keep hearing from people is that it's too modern, or it doesn't fit, or it's too big. I think that particular space, like Jarrett said, you know, you really don't have a lot of depth to work with. And I think that if you keep that in mind, you understand what happened and how we got there. And actually, I don't think it looks horrible. And I actually like the parking on the ground floor. It has an open feel to it, and I never see it full. If you keep going down the street, I really like the residential units that are being unveiled as they kind of unwrap. I think that they're attractive and they fit with the rest of the cityscape. So I think primarily, we're talking about the corner of First and Main as being, for me, that seems to be the most distinct building that serves as an anchor for our city entrance, but also is supposed to serve a purpose. Mostly, I think it's okay, but I do understand the canyon area, and it does give us pause going forward as to what we should do to adjust zoning and our priorities for the zoning. I know Mayor Satterley put together a walking tour, which most of us participated in, and learned a lot about the background and how this happened, and it was very much appreciated by everybody.
Right. Alex?
I think the question, knowing what we know now is part of the problem. It's very difficult to envision what something's going to look like. One thing I've suggested in this campaign is that we may want to consider having a virtual model of downtown, something that many people are used to in real estate and industry of having a flyby so you can see what something looks like. When a proposal comes in, the model can be placed in that. I'm 80/20 on the street. I'm not in love with it, but I don't think it's as bad as most people are making it out to be. I don't want to take pot shots or cheap shots at the city council for, you know, what is obviously a very difficult street to develop. I was walking down there yesterday during the fall festival, and it was 95 degrees, and it was nice and shady, and I actually did enjoy that. We did need parking. There were compromises made. Safeway dedicated their parking to be public parking, which it wasn't. So, you know, there were compromises, and that's how it went. I think going forward, though, having something that the city council and the staff have a better vision of due to putting in the right tools, and that the public can see also so that they can have more input in advance and get their complaints out in front of it instead of after the fact would be good.
Great.
I agree that it would have been good for the community had we had more information up front, and we might all have come to accept it earlier, the rapid change of scale that we've experienced on First Street. I thought there should have been story poles used, which put poles up that show the bulk and the height of the building so that prior to their approval, the community could have had an idea. I also have suggested that we have 3D modeling available to the community so that they could see that. But I would have preferred that since they are narrow, perhaps we had not rezoned them to be as tall as they are. I'd go back to that point in time, because since they are narrow, the height is a problem to me in terms of the narrow street. The height is exaggerated by the location. So I would have preferred that we had not rezoned the property to accommodate the density that's currently there. As other people have said, I think that we could have stood some setbacks, some different landscaping, a little more architectural articulation so that we did have a little more interest rather than a flat building. Safeway's capable of a better building, and I think Los Altos deserves better building all up and down the street. First and Main, we had complete control over, so I won't go arguing over whether or not the sale should have been made, but certainly, we had the ability to control what would happen there since we did own the property and could sell it with as many strings attached as we wanted to. So I'm disappointed with what we've gotten, but I think it could be better next time if we do a little more information to the public prior to approval.
Great. Any other interaction or comments about First Street? Okay, our second question is, what is your plan for downtown parking?
I could start on that. I think there's a couple of things to consider. First and foremost, we need to figure out how much parking we need. Easy way to do that is to run a test. Stanford Mall, for example, puts the employees off-site during the December holiday season. We should start by trying to get a couple hundred, 200 to 500 people parking not in downtown Los Altos for a short period of time, and see what effect it actually has on parking. Once we know what we really need, and the public can have some understanding of what to expect, if there actually were 500 more parking spots or 250 more spots, then we go down the path of figuring out, do we do a parking garage? I think that is very, possibly, one of the solutions. I would also like to see more parking at the civic center. The civic center is 18 acres. There's lots of room for underground parking when that project occurs, bearing in mind that's a few years out, and it begs the problem of how you get across San Antonio. That's going to have to be addressed at the same time.
Great. Who'd like to go next? Jean?
I think there's no doubt we need a parking garage. We've been talking about it and done studies since 1993, maybe even before that. We need a parking garage, in part because there is not enough parking, although the peak problem is at lunch hour on weekdays, but, so that's not the main reason. The main reason we need a parking garage is we need a parking-in-look fee system so we can unlock the development and allow people to build, you know, two-story. Even if, on Main and State Street, even if you tear down your one-story building, you're not allowed to rebuild the same number of square feet in many of the lots because they are underparked. So it's completely frozen. So again, without changing the height limits, just allow the normal rebuilding and redevelopment. We need a parking structure. That's the only way. I mean, the only other options are pay parking, which nobody wants, or re-stripe all the parking plaza, at high cost, by the way, but then all of the parking places are narrow and everybody ends up banging their car every time they go in and out. So parking garage, for sure.
Okay. Next?
I can go. I think, you know, the parking garage is actually quite a difficult one for me. I realize there is definitely a parking problem. I'm trying to understand exactly what it is. I hear from the residents that it's peak parking during lunchtime, and I get that. I have circled the block myself many times. But, for example, like today, I went downtown at 12:02. There were four parking spaces right out in the open on Main Street, and then I drove around onto State Street, and there were three more. So I think it's hit or miss. I don't think it's 100% that there's a, that it's always at that time, but I think we should think before we spend tons of money on a new parking garage. We may need another bond for this. So how much are we willing to pay for something like this? So I'm looking at alternatives that would be maybe stopgap measures until we figure out for sure that this is what we want. I mean, maybe we do. This is what I'm thinking, though. For festival parking, we could utilize Uber. I've talked to Uber. They're willing to put in a stand for us so that during and after festivals, we could shuttle people to and from their homes and have a place to meet. There's also something called Spot On Parking, which is up and running in San Francisco, where you can, it allows you to rent private unused spaces, and there are a lot of unused parking spaces under the buildings downtown. You use it all from your phone. It's, you know, some of the technology that's available now. We can also work to improve our walking paths so that people can walk downtown. I understand there's a bit of a problem going from across Foothill to get downtown, and Pasaral is working on putting in a better crossing system, or at least they're doing research on it right now. I think a garage may definitely be needed, but I think we shouldn't jump to the tried and true until after we've looked at other options that might be available to us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So I think we need to look at all alternatives also. I agree with Alex that maybe we ought to be looking at what can be put at the community center. I think you could operate a small shuttle, maybe even glorified golf carts to bring people back and forth from the civic center to town. I think that this, again, points to the need for a downtown-specific plan which unifies the community center and the downtown, so that we see how many places are available at the community center prior to thinking that we can go out and raise the money to build a parking garage. I understand that at 322nd Street, pardon me, 323rd Street, which for those of us who have been around a long time was one-time Bank of the West and is currently the two-story office building with condos on the top, their bottom floor parking is rented out because no one ever uses it. So there are still problems with usage of garages if they go underground particularly. So I too believe, as Karen said, that we should be looking at every other alternative, including any new Spot app, or Uber, or whoever might come. We have tried the off-site at high holiday periods, and it has relieved it. We've used the churches at various times. LAVA has operated that program. We've had valets during the holiday period. But I am in the downtown every day, and as others have said, the parking problem is at its height from 11 to 1 or 2. And I think we still have a lot of construction trucks in town, even though they're supposed to all park on University, they don't. I see them in the parking plazas every day. So I think a little time has to pass before we actually know what we need.
Great. Well, I find it interesting that our first two questions tonight are actually focused on the downtown, because there's a lot of community here in Los Altos outside of our downtown. But with regards to parking in our downtown, I appreciate some of the comments made by our earlier speakers. The city has made attempts to alleviate the peak parking demand periods throughout the year through the use of valet parking and other methods. I believe that in Los Altos, it's important to remember that capacity parking means that we're at 80 or 90% of our lots being filled. That means that most likely, there are still spots available even during our peak-capacity times. Somewhere within the downtown, there's still parking available. I think it's important to keep that in mind as we look at what is the investment that our community wants to make. There are some individuals in town that hold an interest in the downtown that have suggested a parking garage is the most important solution. There are others that have suggested that re-striping of plazas is the most important solution. Personally, I think that the most important part of this is figuring out the financing mechanism. How is the city of Los Altos going to fund the parking solutions that we want to provide? A shuttle has been suggested probably every year for the last 20 years, but it's never been enacted because of the cost of running a shuttle. The VTA runs at a loss for most of their bus lines. The city taking on a new shuttle system never was a solution that we could pursue. I believe that a parking garage is most likely the most cost-effective way to achieve parking solutions. As Jean Mordot mentioned, I think parking-in-look is an important program because it does provide the ability for property owners to have flexibility in deciding what the best way to develop their land and invest in our community is. So I believe that we do have the opportunity to tackle our parking challenges downtown, but I think it's important to keep these in scope with what the rest of the needs of our community is as we look at transportation across our town.
Great. Thank you very much. So moving away from downtown, Measure N. What is your position on Measure N and why?
I'd be happy to start. I endorse Measure N publicly. I think that Measure N is an important investment that the school district is required to make due to the increased enrollment of our schools. I was listening to an individual that works at Los Altos High School, which I know is not in the elementary school district, but it's suffering from the same influx of students that have gone through the school district. And when I was actually at Los Altos High School, there were 1,100 students. This wasn't that long ago. For some of those high school kids out there, I think it's important they know that, but when I was there, there were 1,100 students. There are now 1,900 students at the same high school. We're looking at this kind of increase across the entire school district, and Los Altos School District simply needs more facilities to be able to educate these students. I believe that there are some issues with the language within Measure N. I believe that all parks in Los Altos are going to be as equally defended as the two parks that were actually called out not to be used as a source of these funds could not be used to purchase those. But aside from that, I truly believe that the elected officials that we have on the school district are taking a diligent step by moving forward with Measure N.
Great. Next? Jean?
I wholeheartedly endorse Measure N. It's just as simple as this. We need more school. It costs money to buy land and to build buildings, and there's just no issue. I'm for it.
Great.
I'm in favor of Measure N also. I believe we should have a committee that will oversee the spending of the bond money because I believe it's always good to have oversight, community oversight, as we've had in the past over initiatives. But I'd also agree, it's clear that the school district needs an influx of funds. It just needs to be carefully spent.
Great.
I am also in favor of Measure N. As much as it hurts my pocketbook, I'm trying to keep in mind that the enrollment has gone up 25% in the last 10 years, which is kind of incredible. We need to be able to keep pace with that. It has nothing to do with any particular schools in any areas. It just, that's what it is. And with the additional housing coming, we've got additional enrollment issues that are probably coming too. We need to tackle this problem now. I think this is a good first step for us, and we are doing the best we can with what we have.
Great. Alex?
I have endorsed Measure N. I'd agree with many of the comments previously made. Language in Measure N is problematic. The money needs to be watched carefully. There needs to be oversight. I recall the last project the school did, they ran out of money before the school remodels were over. They closed Bullis because they didn't have the money to remodel it, and that's created a decade-long controversy within the city, closing the only school in Los Altos Hills. So there's more kids. They need classrooms. It's not a difficult question. It just needs to be implemented properly.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, would you vote for a true two-term limit to council membership with no return after two?
Absolutely yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know, Zoe. We've had an issue with that in this community. I believe that residents have the opportunity to vote with their truest belief in what's best for the community. If a council member were to serve for two full terms, take two years off, and then run for reelection, which is what our council norms currently state, I think that the community would still have the opportunity to decide whether or not it was appropriate for that person to return to the city council. And I think it's important to provide the community with that choice.
I don't feel it's been a problem in the community yet. I don't see it as being a big priority or worthy, really, of much discussion time.
Okay. Jean?
I'm in general not in favor of term limits, although I understand when you have had a bad council... bad council or bad council member, it's tempting to say, okay, let's prevent this person or this group of people to come back. But, you know, then you have a good council and then they can't come back. So, I mean, so I don't think it's a good solution. It's just a knee-jerk reaction.
Thank you all. We're going to take a five-minute break now, and so we'll be back to you shortly.
KMVT 15 is your community media center. We are here to provide hands-on training, equipment, and resources to you to express your voice over many distribution platforms. Since 1982, KMVT 15 has been providing media resources to the community. Yearly, we train over 300 youth through our video camps. Hundreds of scouts come yearly to take tours and learn about media in order to earn their journalism badges. We offer classes in all areas of media from video to editing, photography, graphics, video chats, and much more. Training can also be done on location. KMVT 15 has a community message board that runs daily, providing information to the community about upcoming events. We also provide tools to nonprofits to create dynamic video messaging quickly with an online system. We offer sponsorship opportunities to businesses to support our efforts in creating local and educational programs from high school and middle school sports to Project Connect, a digital media learning initiative. KMVT 15 provides an array of innovative media production services to create compelling media for businesses, nonprofits, and individuals. By hiring our professional staff, you are helping us to support our mission to provide resources and educational opportunities to the community. KMVT 15 works with schools to provide digital literacy training for teachers, students, and parents. We provide after-school opportunities like MV Youth Productions, which gives students hands-on digital video and team-building skills. KMVT 15 provides coverage of graduations, sports, and local arts. KMVT 15 brings you local coverage from government meetings and elections to ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings. KMVT 15 is your distribution resource over the air, online, and via streaming. We have a potential viewership of over 400,000 throughout the entire Bay Area via Comcast Channel 15 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. We also have a strong viewership online, reaching millions on YouTube, and a Roku channel that streams our content and has a potential reach of over 5 million viewers. So, when you think of KMVT 15, remember we have a full production facility, production truck, and an award-winning staff here to support your needs.
Where do you think you're going?
Is your body holding you back?
I want to go running. Not with that knee, you're not. It's fine, negative.
Your bones and joints can say no at any age.
With that shoulder, you're going to pick up that truck. Really?
Keeping you from working, playing, or just plain moving.
Let's not, uh, pick her up. What do you say?
Yet a lot of people who live with pain fight back.
Use your head. Save your back. My pride, my rules.
And regain their lives.
You gotta be kidding me.
Whoa. I'm going running. I'm going running.
I've got to see this. Come on, pick it up.
Fight for your mobility. Find your own inspiration at AnationInMotion.org. A message from the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons.
Come on. I'll take it from here.
Trisha's having a sleepover tonight. Can I go?
I wonder about Lucy's friends. What should I say? I know you're only 10, but one of these days, a friend will offer you a drink. And alcohol, at your age, can lead to so many things, none of them good.
So, can I go to the sleepover?
Lucy, I want you to promise me something.
I finished my homework.
Bigger promise. If there's any drinking, I want you to say, "No thanks, not my thing."
Mom!
I promise you, your real friends won't care. Deal?
Sure.
Really?
I promise, Mom.
They really do hear you.
Did you pack your toothbrush?
For tips on how to start the talk, visit underagedrinking.samsa.gov. A public service message from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Welcome back to the KMVT debate for Los Altos City Council candidates. I'm Sam Harding, and I welcome you back to hear more from our candidates. The next question deals with Phase 1 of the incoming, or the community pool and community center in downtown Los Altos. In the, what is your position on the community pool as part of Phase 1 of the proposed bond issue?
I can go first. I'm in favor of the community center being revised. I think it needs to be, it's in desperate need of being repaired. According to the mayor, there are some things that you just can't even repair anymore. They're just beyond help. So, they're having to shut down parts of it. So, I think that we definitely need a community center. It serves the needs of the residents of all ages. And the way it's being designed, it looks like it's going to provide even more services. What was approved at last week's council meeting was $60 to $70 million projected budget that we're going to try to put together and the various financing opportunities that we have. So, and then they went on to discuss what the priorities were, the top three. Obviously, the community center, parking, and I think it was a pool. And I'm also in favor of a pool because I think that even though many of us in the community have pools, it serves as a meeting place for people. And that's kind of what a community, where we can all come together. It's good for toddlers. It's good for seniors. It's good for everybody in between. I think it's a good community-building place.
Great, thank you. John?
I'm totally in favor of the pool for several reasons. One, it's because it's something exciting and new that it's not just, we're not just tearing down a building and rebuilding it, which is necessary, but not very exciting. But it's something new that used to exist way back, I understand, and has disappeared, the community pool. Also, it has a lot of support among the residents. It polls like around 70%. I mean, it's one of the few things that people would say they would be willing to pay for in a rebuilt community center. And thirdly, the pool is one of the few things that actually there is fundraising going on. And I understand that the group that raising money for the pool has lined up some donors. So, as soon as the city gives its go-ahead and reserves a space, I think a lot more money can be raised. So, that's why I'm in favor of the pool.
Happy to jump in. I think that the plan that the current city council has moved forward with, I don't want to be seen as somebody that isn't in support of a community pool because I fear that, wading away from our last forum, some took that feeling. I believe that the city council step that we took last week by approving that the pool needed to be involved in the design of our community center is a strong step to take for providing a location that this pool is going to be in Los Altos. Most likely, this is a funding issue. We have $60 to $70 million that we've decided the budget framework is going to work around, and this may or may not fit within such a tight budget. We're talking of citywide priorities again. Parking garage was mentioned earlier that's supported by candidates, a pool that's supported by candidates. Ultimately, it's what does the resident population in Los Altos support? And what will we like to pay for out of city funds versus donations? Personally, I believe that a pool would most appropriately be funded through some donations, similar to the parking garage being funded by some of our downtown property owners. I think that there's an appropriate structure to the financing that achieves the best outcome for the community, where we do have a pool that we can go swimming in.
Alex?
I support the pool. The community pool group is having a board meeting tonight, which I was invited to but could not attend. Previous colleagues here have mentioned that it does cost money. Yes, pools are not cheap. The budget is tight on the remodel, so it's something we'll need to watch carefully. There is community interest and there is community money. It's a balancing act of what size and what quality of pool we can put in. An important demographic are seniors in this city. 18% are considered senior citizens. Water aerobics and warm water pools are fantastic for orthopedic issues in seniors. It's important to get enough community backing behind the pool to justify the cost of it. That's part of the leadership the city council will have going forward in spearheading this and getting this through.
Great. Mary?
I agree that we need a pool. I think it's a popular item. I also think it's far more green for us to have a community pool than it is for a pool in every backyard. And I know that Greentown, for instance, is now working with some of the rebates available to those people who will fill in their private pools so that there's less usage. So, it's green. It seems to be popular with all age groups, and people seem to want to have it happen. So, I think it's the responsibility of the council to listen to what people are willing to help support, and pool seems to be very high on that list. So, I'm in favor of it.
Great, let's stay with the community center and expand it now to comments on the financing. What do you think is a reasonable amount for the bond? What do you think are other sources for financing for this particular project?
Oh, thank you. Well, according to the surveys that the city council has done, the residential telephone surveys, the community will support up to $20 million as of its last survey. We're about to do another survey updated based on new information and see where that comes in out. Not sure what to expect, if it's dramatically different or not. But going forward, we're hoping that, you know, one of the things on the agenda was to talk to Los Altos Hills City Council and see if they might be interested in doing, checking to see if the residents are in favor of a bond. Also, since we assume that both communities would be using the pool, and then also looking into private donations and just trying to get creative in those ways to see if a combination. I think we also allocated $15 million of our general fund, the reserves, to use for this if we need to. So, there's a combination of things that could work to make it happen, but depending on what we can come up with, that will tell us what we can do.
I think right now, we're at an impasse. The survey showed acceptance of $8 per 100,000, a $20 million bond essentially. The first plan looks like it's in the $70 million range, so there's no progress from here. It's a dead end. So, what needs to happen, I think, is a lot more work needs to be put in into describing this project in detail. There needs to be, again, a 3D model so people can see what it looks like, a list of the facilities, projections of what it would cost to use them. When you want people to make a big decision, you have to give them enough information to make the decision. And I don't think that people are comfortable making this level of decision yet with the information they have at hand. So, I would suggest also we consider adopting or creating a commission for the civic center project. It's a really big project, and getting it right and selling it to the community so that it serves the community is a big project in and of itself.
John?
I think, first of all, I challenge the number that Anderson Brulee came up with. I think frankly, they came up with a number and then added 30 or 40% escalation and 30 or 40% soft cost. I think if we do fixed-price contract and if we manage well, I think we can do, I believe that even numbers are excessive. So, that's my first comment. Second comment, if we do a JPA for recreation with Los Altos Hills, just like we have for the library, and if we do a bond issue, proportionally, Los Altos Hills, even though they're a quarter of the population, of the combined population, I think they would contribute about 35 or 40% of the funds. Thirdly, the issue of the $20 million, if you ask people cold, "Do you want to, how much do you want to spend to tear down Hillview and rebuild it?", not very exciting. But if you do, as Alex said, you know, if you have a model, if you show them what it's going to look like, and have, and we have citizen organize a campaign to communicate to the community what it's going to be like and what are the benefits, I'm sure we can go above the $8 per 100,000 and maybe double that or maybe more. And if we add Los Altos Hills, maybe we can end up with $60 million or something like that. So, I think we should be a little bolder and a little more confident as we move forward and present it to the people and get their reaction. I think we will be surprised by the support we get.
Mary?
So, I agree. I've been in sales and sales training for most of my career. And in sales, there's an expression that says, "Sell the scizzle and not the steak." So, I agree with those who've said, "You don't call people and say how much you're willing to spend." People come to Los Altos and say they're willing to spend $1 million for housing, and very shortly, they might be spending twice that much when they realize what they can buy for the money. So, I think polling people on how many dollars they're willing to spend, like the last two speakers said, is not a fruitful exercise. One has to present an exciting project, well-communicated with models, again, so that people understand what exciting things they will find at the community center, why it will benefit the community, and sell the project to the populace.
Great.
I think that when we dive down and look at how the polling was done for the dollar amount supported by our community, we realize that it creates a graph that's up and to the right. The lower the number goes, the more people ended up supporting it. But the context isn't there during the polling for people to understand, is this affordable from the number that we start with? Personally, I believe that $60 million is a sizable amount to fund for a community center. And I appreciate the wisdom that other members of the council had in supporting the $60 million number, because when we look at it, even in our current polling, we have $20 million that we've polled successfully for this bond measure. And then we've set aside $15 million of both cash reserves and certificates of participation, which is a short-term funding mechanism that the city can use. But that's still only $35 million out of a project that we estimate is going to be $60 to $70 million. I think what's important as we go forward is to provide context of what this bond measure actually is. Personally, I believe that we're going to be required to fundraise $45 million either through a bond measure or through a combination of a bond measure in Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, or the third option is a bond measure of a smaller amount and private financing coming in to help provide the funds for the rest of the project. But I believe that it's important that we approach this with the understanding that the bonding, the polling that was done for our bond isn't an exact science. And that what's really important is as we inform our residents what we're attempting to build, we provide them the context as to how much does another community that's built a community center recently of a similar square footage? What did they spend? How are we saving money? How are we avoiding costs? And how are we planning to recoup the cost of this structure going forward with the programming that we plan to put in it?
Great. Any other comments about the funding mechanisms? Okay, let's go back to First Street. So, this is a question that came in online. What is your position on raising the building height limit on Main Street from the current 30 feet or two stories to 45 feet, three to four stories, similar to the new residents' buildings on First Street?
I'd be happy to answer this. I believe that it's important to keep in mind that the building that we've approved for First and Main, 400 Main Street, that has received a lot of concern this evening, as well as when we're speaking with residents around town, that actually was a 30-foot building. That was zoned for 30 feet. So, I can tell you that I do not support buildings taller than 30 feet on Main Street or on State Street. We would have to look... We would have to look into what possible public benefit could be provided to the residents of Los Altos to build a structure that was taller than either Safeway's measurement or First and Main. I think it's also important to note that we've changed the way that we measure buildings to make it more consistent, so that we're not measuring from the ground to the bottom of the ceiling inside of the structure, but rather, we're taking into account what the actual height of the building is based on its roof line.
Right. Yes?
Right now, as I understand it, the perimeter buildings have a higher zoning, so changing them along Main and State to be higher, I think it would change too much of the overall architectural and the feel of the town. I think people would not be supporting it because already they're up in arms about the First Street development. So I think if I wanted to support the people, I would go with that. My own personal ideas are that depending on, again, you have a wider street on State and Main, you have sidewalk setbacks, you could possibly go up, but I don't think I'd be in favor of it because it would look, again, more canyonist, even though it's wider. I personally like the charm of smaller buildings. It just reminds me of a town instead of a city. You know, I went down Mountain View Castro Street today, and it just has a completely different feel. It's a lot more concrete, it's a lot more, no matter what they do, the sidewalks are very wide, and they've got great setbacks, but they're really high up, and they put the greenery in the middle of the street. And, you know, that's nice, but it's more of a city to me, and I consider Los Altos to be a town.
Thank you. John?
I'm not in favor of changing right now. I don't think there's enough possibility to develop First, I mean, Main and State in the current zoning. There's a lot of one-story building who could be rebuilt or made into two-story building. So I don't see the need to do that at this point. I think I do like the look of the village, and the village look is provided by, essentially, by State and Main, so no, I wouldn't change it.
Alex?
I think Main and State Street need to remain cozy. You know, there's a 100-page design guideline, or 100-page design plan and a 50-page design guideline that call out how to make things that way with the setbacks and the porticos and all these details. It is zoned for two floors. Even that would be a big change to much of the one-story structure we're used to. So I just don't see putting in taller buildings on Main or State.
Okay. Thank you. Staying with the cozy theme for...
I didn't get to answer that.
Yes, oh, sorry, Mary?
All right. So I would call this spot zoning, which is what I believe happened on First Street, so I'll go back to beat the drum for a specific plan. I don't think we ought to be discussing a particular block or two as to its height, but rather, we should be looking at the downtown and community center together in context. I think we got the problem of scale on First Street and the lack of communication to the people on First Street because we didn't do it in context. We do have a design plan that was written in 1994 and revised in 2004, but when we changed the zoning, we didn't change any of those guidelines, nor did we incorporate them into the context. So I don't agree with spot zoning, which is what I would call that.
Okay. Thank you. Staying with that theme, the next question relates to roads, bikes, and cars, and how they relate to our downtown and our larger community. What are your thoughts and ideas on the integration of those three things?
I'll go.
Mary?
Well, I think we have problems with these things all over town, and I think that's, again, part of a plan, but we need a plan that incorporates all those things. I spent a wonderful evening with our local Greentown last evening and talked to a mom who encourages her kids to bike to school but lives in fear that one of them is going to be in jeopardy because traffic and the children riding to school are interfering with one another. Whether or not we could convince the parents to have a volunteer force that would help to monitor the traffic or do something for the neighborhoods, where we do have this increased enrollment, but we don't have the old-fashioned traffic guards, and we have a lot of danger for kids who do choose to ride their bikes. And certainly, it's better for us if they're riding their bikes than if we have one child in one SUV. Downtown, First Street has made bicycle transport virtually impossible. We have a new law in the state of California that you're to stay three feet from a bicycle. That's not possible and still driving on First Street since we've narrowed it. So I think part of the overall parking issue is to encourage both bicycles and walking. That means we have to, in a plan, incorporate paths for safe walking and biking.
Great. Thank you. Jared?
Be happy to go. Our downtown, when we have made these recent investments, one of the focuses of the investments has been on the pedestrian and bicycle experience. The sidewalks have become wider in much of the downtown, especially in the intersections. The streets have become narrower. That's because the focus of our transportation planning has not been on improving vehicle access throughout the downtown. It's been on improving the pedestrian experience. Narrower streets naturally lead to lower speeds of vehicles. That's something that we have implemented on First Street. Those are narrow streets. And I think that one thing that's important to understand is that if you're driving downtown, take a breath. You don't have to run a bicycle over to get down First Street. But at the same time, I think it's important that we work to manage traffic effectively. Throughout our town, we have numerous projects for collector street master planning efforts, for pedestrian master planning efforts, and for bicycle improvements that need to be made. These, again, come back to the cost, the financing. How is a city? Can we finance sewer, stormwater, transportation, community center, downtown parking projects? The way that we can do it is we can prioritize. And I think that our capital improvements list that we have over the next five years shows that transportation, especially around school zones, is a priority. We have millions of dollars of investments for the blocked traffic area, and I think that that is going to make a major impact on the lives of the students and the families that send their kids on bicycles and walking to school every day. So that's what I want to see happen.
Great. John?
Thing I'd like to add is, in support for parking garage or some kind of solution to the parking, is that what I would love to have is a pedestrian street, pedestrian-only street, either Main or State Street, for example, between certain hours, like, you know, allow early trucks coming in, and then after that, pedestrian only. And we could do that if we had a good parking garage. That would be wonderful. It would be a place where people would actually walk and meet each other in the center of town.
Great. Alex?
I'll talk about macro traffic effects. We're part of a very busy 6-million-person metropolitan area, and there's a lot of traffic that comes through Los Altos that has nothing to do with Los Altos. 280 necks down to three lanes near Page Mill, forcing massive amounts of traffic onto Foothill. El Camino is what it is. San Antonio becomes a feeder between 101 and Foothill and between 101 and up to 280 with a dog leg over at El Monte. We need to work with the other agencies around us, the 23 transit authorities in the Bay Area and the county and the state to some extent, to make sure that we're not just a cut-through for people trying to get between Foothill, 280, and 101. That's the big traffic picture. The little traffic picture is our streets near the schools and things like that. I agree with my colleagues, it is expensive to do. We have to prioritize it. I think we have a long way to go in that area, though, but it's important.
All right. Jared?
Hi. I think, you know, there's a lot of gridlock traffic. It is tough for pedestrians, bikes, and cars to coexist. The three-foot rule is helpful, although sometimes when bicyclists are riding on the outer edge, it makes it a little bit hard to give them three feet, I noticed yesterday. So we could use also some better signals, some better pedestrian crossings. I think at Second and Main, I've had many, many residents tell me they sit there at Starbucks and just wait for accidents to happen. I don't think any have, but they're just, it's not really clear sometimes who's supposed to stop, and there've been recommendations, we should get a four-way stop sign there, we should get a yield sign, we should get something. So there are issues everywhere. We also have to think about the planning for the new school sites, the traffic flow that's going to go there, wherever they end up being, is going to impact even more. So we need to include that in the planning. Also, I got an email from a gentleman last night telling me about an expert, a meeting he went to where he was hearing the Google executives talk about how pro-bike they are, and I responded to him, "That's great. I really, I think that's great that they're encouraging the employees to bicycle," because it can only alleviate some of the traffic that's being directed through the local town off of 85, which is gridlocked. So when you have 85 gridlocked, you've got 280 gridlocked, you've got all these main arteries. I believe the corporations are helping their employees by instructing them to get off the highway so they can get to their destination, which would be work, and encouraging them to go through the backroads, which is also contributing to our, you know, our school traffic, our regular local traffic trying to get to work. So I think that there are a lot of issues that we need to address. And I think that going forward, we should talk to some of the corporations and see what their traffic flow plans are. We need to look at the schools, the school traffic flow, and also look at updating some major arteries. Maybe it's 85, maybe it's Foothill. They're, back to the Passerell. Passerell, as I mentioned earlier, is looking at the pedestrian crossing at Foothill into, across Edith. And I think that there are a lot of good study results in the study that they're doing. They come up with four different options as to how to slow the traffic, how to channel the traffic, and that's just one example of many. So it's a very exciting topic.
Yeah, it is. Thank you very much. We're going to take a short break now and come back to you in a few minutes. Thank you.
Yes.
KMBT 15 has been serving the community since the late '70s and became a nonprofit community media center in the early '80s, bringing you local television programming from local volunteers. KMBT Community Media is located right here in the heart of Silicon Valley. We provide hands-on training, equipment, and airtime to our users to build community and empowerment through the expression of media. Our youth camps support hundreds of students yearly and allow their voices to be heard. KMBT has well over 100 volunteers of all ages who come into our studio each and every month to produce local programming. Programming ranges from talk shows on community issues, cooking shows, local artists, magazine news programming, and live entertainment, and much, much more. We cover over 100 sporting events, including football, softball, baseball, volleyball, and basketball. We also cover local events like the Art and Wine Festival, Veterans Memorial Day, and the Spring Parade. KMBT provides coverage of local elections, debates, and candidate statements. We offer something for everyone, whether you're a youth, adult, senior, a nonprofit business, or even a for-profit business. So why is KMBT important? Because it's programming like this that brings a community together. We also provide full hands-on training for all ages in studio production and field work, graphics, editing, and an understanding of media in a world surrounded by noise. So we ask, the next time you turn on your television or you want to support an important cause, think KMBT 15, your local community television station, bringing the community together through all forms of media. Support community media and television today.
You'd do anything to take care of that spot on your lawn, so why not take care of that spot on your skin? If you're a man over 50, you're in the group most likely to develop skin cancer, including melanoma, the cancer that kills one person every hour. Check your skin for suspicious or changing spots, and ask someone you trust to check areas you can't see. Early detection can put you in a better spot. Go to spotskincancer.org to find out what to look for. A message from the American Academy of Dermatology.
We're no longer just sedentary, we're stationary, and that's bad news for your bones. At any age, bones need weight-bearing activity to grow strong and stay strong. So go outside, take the steps, play with a dog, just get up, get out, get moving.
A public service message from the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons.
The United States Air Force has a proud history of leading our nation in embracing diversity. We've been reaching new heights for years by understanding it's our individual experiences which make us strong. You can share in this success by seeking opportunities to learn and grow as a member of a diverse team. We are the world's greatest air force, not because of what we do, but who we are. This message is brought to you by the U.S. Air Force.
Okay, welcome back to the KMTV debate for Los Altos City Council positions. And we're going to start up using, or going to the south of Los Altos, to Loyola Corners and the south of Los Altos. What is your vision for Loyola Corners, and what can be done to make South Los Altosans feel more part of the greater Los Altos?
Well, I think that one of the ideas that was discussed several years ago that was the most intriguing was actually to eliminate the bridge at Loyola Corners and return it to a level crossing, because with the bridge, there's the feeling that it's a bypassed shopping district. This unfortunately is not going to be a reality because we do have the county funding the renovation of that bridge, so we will not be seeing a level grade at Loyola Corners, although I still think that creative solutions like that are the ones that we should be considering. I think that the future of Loyola Corners is to be one of our wonderful boutique shopping districts in town. I think that the services and restaurants that are there are sought after by our community. The Bicycle Store is probably one of the staples of Loyola Corners, and the restaurants that have operated there have been, again, loved by members of the community for many years. But I think that the future of Loyola Corners comes down to what residents want to see there, and I look forward to working with that.
Do any candidates live in the south of Los Altos?
I live in Loyola Corners, so I'm very familiar with it. It's a very small district. One of the things about central Los Altos, which usually that's called, or mid-Los Altos, there aren't a lot of city facilities there, so I don't think the citizens are resented. The facilities that are there are parks and things like that. I think a little more attention to the city facilities that are there, the tennis courts and parks, would go a long way toward making the city feel like, or that portion of the city feel more like they're part of it. You get the maintenance yard, that's nice, but you'd like to get a few other things in the neighborhood that would be a little more useful and endearing to the citizenry.
Okay.
the citizenry. Okay?
John?
I'll second what Alex just said. I've been walking the streets with my campaign worker friend, my wife. We walked all the streets of Middle Los Altos and South Los Altos. And I want to, I want to tell you that the legend that there are two cities, or that South Los Altos is different from North Los Altos, and is, feels left out, is not exactly true. I mean, all of the same issues, when I walk and talk to people in South Los Altos, are exactly the same. Now, there are a few local issues, you know, like the, you know, fallen leaf, they're concerned about the Stevens Creek Trail. In Loyola Corner, they would like to see a little bit more attention, a little bit more beautification. But they realize that their main, their main concern is Los Altos Center. The question I got were about First Street, were about the Civic Center, were about, you know, getting more vibrancy downtown, so it's not dead at 6 o'clock, and you have to go to dinner in Mountain View or Palo Alto. So same issues as North Los Altos.
Great. Jared?
I agree with John on a lot of it. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Karen, okay. I think that a lot of the issues are isolated. Most of the concern seems to be in the downtown area. There are a few, you know, one issue I saw was, you know, walking down along past the post office as I was campaigning, you know, the side streets seem a little bit dangerous to walk on. I mean, the main street seems a little bit dangerous to walk along with the traffic, and not really a dedicated sidewalk. And there are some issues where I think we could give some attention. I am thrilled that there's going to be a new bridge constructed. I was reading about that. That sounds wonderful. But again, I think Fallen Leaf is the only street I've walked down that we're, they're really concerned about the Stevens Creek Trail, the potential of it going down their road, and the potential of losing a part of the landscaped area. So I think that, you know, depending on which pocket you're in, there's always different issues, even in, you know, even in North Los Altos and other areas, there's always something specific. But mostly, I think, for a majority of the residents throughout all of Los Altos, their concern is the Civic Center, the school sites, and the downtown area, and parking, and traffic.
Great. Mary?
Sure. So I believe that what we call South Los Altos and Mid Los Altos do have the same concerns that the rest of us have. Obviously, there are individual projects that they'd like to see taken care of. Right now, Grant Park Building is being looked at for improved senior services there perhaps. That seems to be a worthwhile idea, to have some senior services to the south of town. But I would just say that these people all bought where they bought, when the community services were located where they are now. And they sort of chose their distance from what we call the center of town. So I think it's always important that these neighborhoods feel that they're being communicated with. But I think that's been a problem, whether the neighborhoods in North Los Altos or Mid Los Altos. I think overall, we need a council who is anxious to engage the communities of every neighborhood, or the citizens of every neighborhood, and willing to listen to their concerns respectfully.
Great. Any other comments about South Los Altos or Loyola Corners? Okay. Next is, if elected, do you feel you have an obligation to complete a full term? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes or no question? I'm not sure if there's more needed.
But maybe elaborate. Why do you, is that?
Well, the reason I'm running is not to fix a problem. It's because I want to do the job. If it were just one problem, I'd say, oh, yeah, when it's done and fixed, I'll be done. But no, I have always served the community for as long as I can remember, and that's what I love to do. And I'm doing it for that reason.
Great.
It's taking a lot of effort to run. It costs me personally a lot of money, and a lot of my supporter are supporting me. And I'm walking the streets in 90-degree weather, and I intend to win. And if I win, I'll serve my term, for sure.
Great. If elected, I would serve. However, you know, I understand other people may have problems completing a term. Things change. People get divorced, businesses close, there's changes in life. So I don't fault somebody who goes into an office intending to meet this commitment. I think there's a lot of qualified people in Los Altos that could be tapped to sit on the council, in the event that that did occur. Okay? I'm not, I would of course plan on serving, but yes.
I think that absolutely, the city council is an office where we should expect full commitment from our council members. I believe that there are often life situations where something may change, and a council member may not be able to complete their term. But I believe that a commitment from the council members to serve in best faith while in the office is absolutely a requirement of serving on the council.
Great. Mary?
I'm interested in serving the entire term with John. It's a lot of effort to look at it as a temporary or partial commitment. And also, I have the goal that at the end of that four years, I will have been able to encourage others to be anxious to take the job and to work hard for the community.
Great, thank you. Next, let's move to police services. And there's been comments about considering having sheriff services for the city of Los Altos. What is your position and your idea on whether that's something to consider or not? Alex?
Now, I understand that six or seven years ago, the city did, the staff did a study on what type of money would be saved by going to county services. I understand that some of my colleagues think it's probably a good way to save some money. But I think police are a core service in this city. And more importantly than the money, the response time difference of a few minutes versus 15 minutes for a sheriff is immense. So I think under no uncertain terms, should we outsource the city police to any other service? It's a core service we need to keep close.
Can I respond to this?
Yes.
I think, Alex, wouldn't you consider fire a core service? It is, and it's outsourced to the county. And by the way, the firemen who are serving Los Altos are located in Los Altos. The only difference, they're paid by the county. So the fact that the county does it is not necessarily mean that it's people who change all the time will come in just when they're needed. They are here. So I would like to say I'm not--
Did you want to answer that?
No, you can answer after. So my point is not that I'm necessarily in favor of going to the county. In fact, when I was in Los Altos Hills on the council, we had the county. And when the contract came to expiration, I requested that we check, you know, before we renew with the county, we check doing it with Los Altos, or with Mountain View, or doing our own. And we did a study, and we concluded that we should stay with the county. So, but what I'm in favor of is actually working with all the facts. I don't want to make a decision without data. Now, I heard some numbers kind of out of thin air saying the county can do the same job that we're spending $9.5 million now for half the price. I doubt it, okay? I have my doubts. But if it is true, I would like to see it. I would like to see how they could have the same response time that we have today, the same number of, you know, boots on the street, and the same number, same attention, and the same quality of service. If they can really do it for $4.5 million, you know, I would be a fool not to just look at it before I make a decision. And by the way, even if we end up, if they end up convincing us that they can do it for significantly cheaper, it doesn't mean that we take the cheapest solution. But at least we make a decision with all the facts.
Great. You wanted to respond, Alex?
Sure. Yeah. This report the staff did approximately six to eight years ago showed about an 8% savings by going to the county. However, when your response time goes from a few minutes to 10 to 15 minutes, you have essentially an 80% degradation in what you get for an 8% saving. That's no deal. With regards to the fire department, they did manage to run a brand-new fire truck into the creek by growing over a bridge that wasn't rated for a multi-ton fire truck. So it's not quite the same having county people and, I think, local people. They did that in Loyola Corners. I remember seeing the truck in the creek.
I can tell you right away, if it's 8%, I'm not even interested in talking to the county. If it's 50% or 30 or 40%, I'm willing to talk, okay?
Mary?
I think that after six or eight years, it's time to review it. I'm not, I don't, I haven't arrived at any conclusion. But I think if we're talking about that amount of money, we need to look at it. And I agree entirely that it's not simply a money decision. You have to look at response time. You have to look at the comfort level of the people who live in the town and their response. But it may be time to look at what proposals we would have coming forward.
Great.
I think with a core city service like police, we certainly are open to reviewing what options we have. This is one of the major expenses that the city of Los Altos undertakes. So if we're looking at a third of our budget, if we combine fire and police, that's actually half of our city budget. And making sure that we're being very diligent with how we're contracting those services or providing them in-house is absolutely important to the financial integrity of our city. I believe that, as John mentioned, I'm skeptical. I don't believe that there has been any statement from the county that $4 million is the contract price for providing the current level of service that we receive here in Los Altos. Oftentimes, when there are county takeovers of local services, whether in this county or other counties, we often see that the county agency makes an effort to employ as many of the employees from the local agency within the county agency as possible when the change occurs. I think that if something like this were to happen, it would be similar to when the fire contract was actually outsourced to the county. And many of the Los Altos firefighters were hired by the county to provide the same services, just being an employee of the county. But as we've seen the progression of our budgeting over the last few years, we do see that we have very limited control over the costs of providing fire services. We have limited control over the labor negotiations of those employees. Out of all the employees in the city, library and fire, we have no control over the labor negotiations that take place. I think that when we're looking at such a major part of our budget, it's important to remember that if we can ask our department heads to cut costs by 3% to 5% year after year after year for the last few years while we've been in a financial recession, that's of value to our community. We've seen the cost of fire increase during the same time that we've seen other costs decrease.
Right. Thank you. Karen, your comments?
Thank you. I think it really is important to make prudent decisions on the financial burdens that these sources are to the city and to the residents. I think one of the valuable things we have as a community, and which also leads to our village, or charm, or small townness, is having a personalized police department who can serve the community, knows the people's names, knows where they live, and knows the habits of people. I think one of the things that helps is when you have a community that is familiar with each other, you create a cohesiveness. And I think that's something that we really, we can benefit from. They say it takes a village, and I think the police are part of that village. My own kids, you know, everybody checks on my own kids, everybody checks on other kids, and the police are part of that. I think in our neighborhood, we have a really special relationship with them. Not that the police are in my house all the time, sorry. So, but I think overall, it's a good program. The response time is less than five minutes. It's an amazing response time. It's because they know the streets, they know the area, and they know the neighborhoods. We don't have that kind of response time, I don't think, anywhere else. And so we appreciate that.
Okay. Any comments back and forth on this issue?
One more comment.
Alex?
You know, I think the comment Jared made was good about the ability to control costs with county employees. You don't. And I think the city employees have been, and council's done a good job of working together productively to manage the costs and the pension issues that go along with having employees.
Let's move to the library. And what is your position on the existing library, or changes that should take place relative to the library? Who'd like to go first? Yes?
Well, as we're looking at building the new community center, we're also looking at potentially making some changes, some renovations, maybe some expansion to the library. It's not on the current docket, but it's on a potential docket. And I think one of the things we need to look at is how we envision using our library five, 10, 40 years down the road. Right now, when you want to build a chicken coop in your backyard, you don't go to the library and check out references books. You go on YouTube, and you figure it out that way. So our needs have changed. We also have, everybody in my book club goes to the library and virtually checks out on their phone the next book. So we're using it differently. I think the material needs of the library are changing, and we need to look at that as we structure any renovations and any building of expansion, and include that in the community center plan if it gets to be that part. There's exciting changes. There's a great DVD collection, and there's wonderful meeting rooms, and the staff is amazing. Are we, do we think we're going to use it more as a computer internet center, where we can check out iPads and read books there? I mean, these are the types of things we need to project into the future before we spend money on it that would potentially take us into the future.
Great. Yeah, Sean?
I'd say, I'm sorry, Sam, even ahead of the swimming pool, the library is one of the most popular amenities, public services in the civic center. And I think it's too small. Some people are saying, well, now with eBooks and all that, you know, who needs the space? But given the size of our community, and given the level of interest in our community, the library is way too small. It needs to be, we need a new library. And I know that if the city provides some of the funds, I think we can raise the money from the residents. We've, they've agreed to tax themselves $33 at the county level, parcel tax, plus another $76 at the NCLA level, just Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. So a total of $109 a year per parcel for 20 years, because they love the library. So I'm sure that if we have a plan to build a new library, and the city would provide, of course, the land and some of the money, I think we can raise quite a bit of money from the residents.
And would you say one library or two? What about the South Los Altos?
Well, we need to bring up the South Los Altos Library as well. But the main library is the one that has the most services for the kids and the most, the program. For example, that program room, I understand, is essentially booked 100% of the time. We need more space there for program, for reading program for the kids, for presentations. So, yeah, definitely it's a priority.
Okay. Who'd like to go next? Mary?
I'm happy to. So the library's been an important part of our community for a long time, and I think it will continue to be that. I think the uses are changing somewhat. And I think perhaps it's leaning more toward community center kinds of activities than strictly the days of the Dewey Decimal System. But I believe we need to improve the library, whether that's by expansion or better communication with the balance of the community center in the downtown. I'm back to the fact that I believe we need a plan for the community center and the downtown, which interfaces the two and makes for easy movement back and forth. So some of the functions that the library performs might be actually a part of the greater community center. So I believe we need a whole plan.
Okay. Alex?
Libraries are very important. Even though our information storage systems may be changing, we don't rely as much on cellulose. We're using bits and pixels more. But if you look at a university, or places, or great big cities, the libraries still serve the same function. They're a place of learning and a place of gathering to exchange knowledge. So there will be a shift, I think. The meeting or program rooms are very important. It's not the same watching something on the computers, hearing a noted author or poet read something. So they're very important to our community. Our community is a highly educated community. Much of the wealth that's generated here is due to having such a Much of the wealth that's generated here is due to having such a concentration of advanced degrees and just generally well-educated, hard-working people. Whether it's seniors or kids, the library's part of any good community. And the South Los Altos Library should not be neglected.
All right.
Even recently, we, as a city, have made investments into our main library. We've taken a long look at how to improve the traffic circulation around the main library, and we've invested a significant amount of funds to help alleviate some of the pedestrian-vehicle conflicts that exist there. I think the reality is, the library building is one of our newer buildings as far as city facilities are concerned. The Woodland Library has been recently remodeled and is a real gem in our community as far as a quiet space to enjoy. I think that the path forward for our library is similar to that of what has happened with our recreation department. I'm always amazed that lightsaber dueling classes have been a very well-attended recreation program in the city of Los Altos. That's because that's community-supported. It truly is the wants and needs of residents that participate. And I think that the library, similarly, is going to continue to evolve and expand to meet the diverse needs of our residents, trying to find what programming, what materials, and what methods of engagement, innovation, they can provide to use the space that they have to the best ability. I think that the city will continue to be ready to make investments as needed, but I don't believe that a new facility is going to be the scope of those investments.
Karen?
Yeah, I'd like to add that one of the reasons we moved to the area and we live very close to the library is because we love libraries. I built my house, I built a little library in there too because I just thought we love books. So it's not that I'm thinking that we want to eventually do away with books. There's always going to be a place for them. My question about renovation and expansion was more about how much capacity do we need if we're expanding just for that? And also, I'd like to point out that if we are building a new community center that has meeting rooms, is there some overlap? Can we think outside the box and go, well, we've got these many programs were happening in the meeting room here, we've got this many programs happening in the meeting room here, and if you've got three rooms over here, why don't we connect them and share use and make it a little bit easier to plan?
Okay. Yes, Sean?
Just one thing I'd like to add, I just found out recently, that they're so short of space in our library that every time they buy a new book, they have to get rid of a book.
Wow.
I mean, absolutely, and just one for one. It's just, there's no place to put anything else.
Great. One more question, then we'll take a break. The question is, downtown Los Altos, second in Maine, where coffee shops and other interesting places, sometimes people cross the double line to get to that special spot on the other side. Sometimes that's enforced, sometimes it's not. What's your opinion on whether that should be more stringently enforced?
Well, I want to start with this one. I worked in the downtown with the Los Altos Village Association for nearly seven years, and the U-turn made across double yellow lines to get the spot in front of Starbucks was the most expensive cup of coffee I've ever seen purchased. Absolutely, we need to understand that the downtown has so much traffic that this type of illegal maneuvering will be enforced by our police department. There's, I don't believe, a safe way to manage traffic downtown, picking and choosing which California vehicle code laws we're going to enforce, and I don't believe that we have the opportunity to choose those. So I think that enforcing all of our downtown transportation laws are very important.
Okay. Next, who'd like to speak? About that, Jean?
Nothing to add, no?
Okay.
No comment, yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to take a break here shortly, so we'll be back to you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
We are here to provide hands-on training, equipment, and resources to you to express your voice over many distribution platforms. Since 1982, KMBT 15 has been providing media resources to the community. Yearly, we train over 300 youth through our video camps. Hundreds of scouts come yearly to take tours and learn about media in order to earn their journalism badges. We offer classes in all areas of media from video to editing, photography, graphics, video chats, and much more. Training can also be done on location. KMBT 15 has a community message board that runs daily, providing information to the community about upcoming events. We also provide tools to nonprofits to create dynamic video messaging quickly with an online system. We offer sponsorship opportunities to businesses to support our efforts in creating local and educational programs, from high school and middle school sports to Project Connect, a digital media learning initiative. KMBT 15 provides an array of innovative media production services to create compelling media for businesses, nonprofits, and individuals. By hiring our professional staff, you are helping us to support our mission to provide resources and educational opportunities to the community. KMBT 15 works with schools to provide digital literacy training for teachers, students, and parents. We provide after-school opportunities like MV Youth Productions, which gives students hands-on digital video and team-building skills. KMBT 15 provides coverage of graduations, sports, and local arts. KMBT 15 brings you local coverage from government meetings and elections to ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings. KMBT 15 is your distribution resource over the air, online, and via streaming. We have a potential viewership of over 400,000 throughout the entire Bay Area via Comcast Channel 15 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. We also have a strong viewership online, reaching millions on YouTube, and a Roku channel that streams our content and has a potential reach of over 5 million viewers. So when you think of KMBT 15, remember, we have a full production facility, production truck, and an award-winning staff here to support your needs.
Welcome back to the KMBT Channel 15 Candidates Night for the five positions for the Los Altos City Council. We're now going to ask each member to spend a few moments just telling us why they should be elected and as their closing comments for this program. Who would like to begin?
Okay.
Mary is beginning.
I am beginning. So as I said, starting, I think that I can serve the community well because I have a broad-based and deep experience with many constituencies of this town. But in spite of your question, I'd like more to speak to the audience and applaud their interest in this important election and ask them to please not step back on November 5th. Los Altos needs the input of each of you, and each of you has a contribution to make. We're a community made great by volunteers, and the richness of the talent here is our greatest asset. Don't hide that asset. Toss your talent into the ring to make our town a better place. Whether your interest is in Sherwood Triangle, Stevens Creek Trail, our beautiful parks, the school facilities, safe routes for walking and biking, bring your interests forward and make our town a better place. I believe that for the first time in many cycles, we have the opportunity to have a council that will work together for the betterment of this community, and I'd like to be a part of that team. I believe we can bring the best forward in terms of getting projects completed, and I think together, the possibilities are endless. So I ask you to imagine what we could do together, and I'd like your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared?
The mission of our city, city staff, council, commissions, committees, and volunteers is to foster and maintain the city of Los Altos as a great place to live and raise a family. This is a statement that many of us have heard over and over and over again. I'd love it. I think it's a really well-written sentence. The last sentence of our city mission is to nurture and promote traditions of volunteerism, philanthropy, and participation that transform our city into a vibrant, caring community. That's why I want to join the city council. I want to provide the leadership to help transform this community. We're constantly changing. Our downtown is a manifestation of that. The demographics of our community show that. But I believe that through leadership and through diligent planning and fiduciary responsibility, we can continue to promote Los Altos as a vibrant, caring community.
Thank you. Karen?
Hi. Thank you for having me here tonight. I think Los Altos is emerging as a new town, and it's our responsibility to forge the direction the city is taking. We need some balanced change, and considering the collective talent we have here in the area, I think that we have a lot of opportunities to make positive change that we'll all be happy with for several generations to come. And considering all the wonderful options you have to choose from here, I urge you to consider me because I think that I personally feel I can best address the issues. And so when casting your vote, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
All right. The reason I run is because I really love Los Altos, and we are at a crossroad right now. There are many ways we can go, and I would like to make sure we go in the right direction in terms of allowing growth but maintaining our character. So it's a question of balance. I'm fairly pragmatic. I'm not a doctrinaire. I'm not, you know, kind of, let's development, you know, at all costs, or on the other hand, let's do nothing and keep everything the same. So I tend to be balanced and pragmatic. I have 10 years of experience in city government. I've been two and a half years on the planning commission and eight years on the council in Los Altos Hills, and I think we've done good things. I think this next council can be even better than the prior one and can do better things. And I would like to be there to be part of this defining moment for Los Altos.
Great. Alex?
Our neighbor city, Los Altos Hills, has the problem of not being able to have elections because nobody wanted to run other than incumbents. I'm glad that we don't have that problem. I think the city has five good candidates here, and I'd like to thank my colleagues here for throwing their hat in the ring along with me. Good luck to all of you. In terms of why you would vote for one candidate over the other or why you would vote for me, my skill set, I think, is helpful at this point in time to the city. I have an exemplary education, a strong background in pragmatic thinking and engineering. Much of the core services that are required of the city, I've got a great background in. I have empathy for the business and building communities, but not a conflict. I think, as it's been alluded to, we're at a crossroads in some ways. The city's in good shape. It's not that we're facing disaster, but we're sort of in a quagmire. We're not able to move forward on a couple of key issues, the civic center and the downtown are not necessarily moving in the way that, or as quickly as people would like them to move in the right direction. So the ability to clearly communicate, to clarify the council and the city's position is not a skill I think I have that will be helpful. I've also been through the crucible. I deal with a lot of conflict and people who don't get along and have to duke it out to settle their differences, so that doesn't bother me, and I think you need that in city, in any form of government. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, all five of you, for being here, for being interested in going through this procedure and telling us about yourselves, and thank you for your comments. And thank you, viewers, for staying with us during this time. Reminder, vote on November 4th, first Tuesday in November, and also, there will be a live presentation from the, from this station on that evening. So tune in to get an up-to-date, see how each of you are doing on that night of November 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.